Good evening, everybody. I call to order tonight's Bethany City Council meeting for Tuesday, January 2nd, 2018. Will you please rise for the invocation and the flag salute? Mr. Knapp, you want to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow with me as I pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to live in this country. We thank you for sending your Son, Jesus, to die on a cross for us and for this Christmas season we just experienced. Father, I ask that you would give us guidance and wisdom and that you would direct our footsteps like you promised that you would do. We thank you and we give you all the glory, all the honor, and all the praise. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Item one of tonight's agenda is the consent docket. Items A and B, do I have a motion or discussion?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor. The first question will probably go to Mr. Steve Caton. Steve, could you, I noticed on the claims list, we're paying, on tonight's claims list, a significant number of leases for water rights. How many wells do we have that are not producing? Do you have any idea?
We have roughly half of our south well field is out of commission and two on the north well field are out of commission. So that's going to be ten that we can't use?
Well, the reason I'm asking is we're paying money for wells that aren't producing.
Well, we're paying money to lease the rights to the water that's underneath the wells. Mr. Davis might be able to expand on that a little bit, but the wells are assigned to a lease, but we're actually paying money for the lease of the water underneath those surfaces. That's something that comes up every year. We've had those leases for many, many decades and it's just a normal expense that we do.
Is that an annual rate, a fixed rate? You say for many, many years, has it been fixed all the way through?
Is there a inflation clause on?
There's a CPI index on it. And there are several wells on some of the leases. They're just not a well lease, it's a water rights lease. Some of them cover eighty acres or more, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
About a second. Please cast your votes. Item two is a presentation by Parks, Recreation, and Tree Board and possible adoption of Resolution Number 1495 authorizing an application for a grant under the Oklahoma City Community Foundation Parks and Public Space Initiative Grant Program. Do we have a presentation?
Gilbert told me to do that. Excuse me. Parks, Recreation, and Tree Board has met since we were appointed back in May. And we looked at all of our parks, thirteen of them in fact, and we were in the process of deciding what to do with each of them. And in October, we were able to hear from Brian Doherty of the Oklahoma City Community Foundation. And he came in and told us that there were grants available for wellness. So if we could place wellness in our parks, then there would be grants available. So we thought about the different parks that we had, and the first one that came to mind for wellness was Elden Lion. Because we saw the trails being used for walking, we saw the people playing, we saw a lot of recreating going on in Elden Lion Park. We also thought, well, Ripper is there too. We probably will look at Ripper also. So the grant that came up, Danielle brought it to us, and we looked at it and how we could make it work with Elden Lion. We decided we probably needed to start with sort of small items, nothing of really huge size, whatever. And so we met again with Brian Doherty and he explained to us that what he was looking for were things dealing with wellness. So we looked to Elden Lion for trees. And we are, in our grant, we need forty-four trees and thirty-one crepe myrtles at Elden Lion, six benches, and the benches will be along Thirty-Sixth and up north on Glade, three bike racks, because there are no bike racks in any of our parks, and two of the doggy waste stations. And we have one already along the trail. We're just going to add two more to that. And for Ripper, we decided, because Brian said people get their feelings hurt if you don't look at more than one park also. So we looked at Ripper and we said, well, there's a lot of trees that need help there. So seventeen trees for Ripper Park. Now, the only commitment that Bethany has to make to this grant, and this is a first-time thing for Bethany to get a grant for, is that we have to install and maintain the park equipment, putting in concrete pads where necessary, under benches, whatever. Then we've got to maintain the plants. Now, they will be professionally installed. That's part of the cost, is having them professionally installed by the people that Brian Doherty's, the Community Foundation, Oklahoma City Community Foundation, and the Margaret Annis Boys Trust. They will purchase the trees and the shrubs and then they will install them where we want them, where we ask for them, and then we maintain them. That is the grant. And remember, it's wellness. So what we were looking for was wellness, and all we've asked for is things that deal with wellness in this grant. Now, next year, the Community Foundation is going to be celebrating fifty years, and they're going to be giving more money in grants. If we do well with this, we're hoping to look for more money for our parks and for wellness. So this would be a beginning step, a first step into the grant business for Bethany, because we've not done this. Danielle has just done a marvelous job on the grant. She has worked long, long, hard hours. And we now have permission of the Oklahoma City Community Foundation to file that grant. Now we have to have permission of our city council to place this grant. Last year, Community Foundation awarded $270,000 in grants, $270,000. We need a part of that. They went from $8,000 to $35,000. And some of those people are applying again this year. The grant is due on the fifteenth of January. We will hear back on February fifteenth. And we have been like till March of 2019 to put everything into place for the grant. Now, I'd like you to see the presentation that Danielle has prepared on the monitor because it explains a little more about what I just said. I might tell you too, I'm Watson Carlson. I forgot who I was. And I'm the committee chair for the Parks and Trees and.
Everybody knows who you are.
Everybody knows who I am.
So no one knows who Mrs. Carlson is? Yes, so this grant is for, is basically funded from the Margaret Annis Boys Trust that was created back in 1991. And through that trust, the Parks and Public Space Initiative was started to award grants for public improvements in public spaces within, within Oklahoma County. So that's kind of where we're coming from. Last year, like Mrs. Carlson said, there's twelve different projects that ranged from $8,000 to $35,000 totaling about a little over $270,000 total. Part of the, part of the reason that, or part of the process of this is looking at the 2013 Oklahoma City Parks Master Plan, because they use that as a guideline of what the, what has to be in place. So it has to kind of be in line with that type of plan. And I'll kind of describe that in a minute. Within the plan, we are considered to be in the southwest portion of the Oklahoma City metro area. The survey that they did, which is quite extensive, looked at all the different areas and what the citizens wanted within those areas. So for our area, one of, some of the top rating things include walking and biking trails, adult fitness and wellness programs, purchasing lands for neighborhood, neighborhood parks and things like that. Now granted, keep in mind, this is for all of Oklahoma City, not just Bethany, and I'm not sure how they did their surveying. But regardless, it kind of shows you the things that we've heard whenever we was working through the comp plan, too, very similar items of what the citizens wanted to. So it's fairly in line with that. And a lot of our, and as our, with our projects, they are in line with this, such as upgrading the community parks. So we are looking at, including benches and bike racks and things like that, kind of making it user-friendly, or more user-friendly. So this is kind of phase one for us, looking at park improvements. The Parks and, Parks Board kind of looked at it and kind of come up with having trees within Elden Lion Park as well as Ripper Park. So there's going to be a total of a hundred trees and crepe myrtles being placed with this grant. There's going to be a total of six benches, three bike racks, and two pet waste stations that are going to be within Elden Lion Park. And there are conversations, just so that, you know, kind of of other priorities. There's a meeting this Thursday, we're going to be talking more about other parks, too. So, but we just wanted to start off and have something small that we knew that we could implement and we could be successful with. That way we'd have the ability to apply for more grant money later on. The contributions, we are requesting within this grant to have sixty-one professionally installed trees, thirty-one professionally installed crepe myrtles. Again, the six benches, three bike racks, and two pet waste stations, and those will be installed by city staff. The City of Bethany portion of this is the installation and maintenance of the benches, bike racks, and pet stations, and then the concrete pads for the new equipment, and then maintenance and watering of the trees and crepe myrtles. So just to kind of the price breakdown of what we're looking at presently, totaling of about $35,000. Most of that is for the trees, but then there's about, about $3,000 for the benches, about $1,600 for the bike racks, and about just under $900 for the pet waste stations. So for a timeline, by January eighth, we had to notify the Oklahoma City Community Foundation of what we were wanting to do. We've already done that, kind of been ahead of the game a little bit, and we received word just before Christmas that we have the approval from, from Brian Doherty to go ahead and apply for the grant, and we have the grant application. We just have to submit the application, the actual application, which is the first hurdle that you have to cross before you can apply for the grant. The grant is due on January fifteenth, and we are, we are well on our way of having that, having that, meeting that deadline probably well before that, too. On February fifteenth, there's this trustee meeting for the Community Foundation, and we will find out that day whether or not we were, what we will be, what we will be awarded. And then the project completion has to be done within a year, so by around March of This is the map that was included in your packet, just kind of the amenities that we're looking at within Elden Lion Park and kind of the approximate placement of those. And that was done just by doing a site analysis with the, with the board and looking at it and figuring out what users would, would like and to see. And then the tree planting site, this is the Site A that was just handed to you in the hard documents of the different trees and things like that that's going to be planted. So basically, replacing all the Siberian elms that are along Thirty-Sixth Street and then having new trees and crepe myrtles that are going to be considered line-friendly to where they're not going to be chopped all up in the future. And then there's this Site B with the placement of the trees approximately. And then Ripper Park, we're looking at three different locations. One is going to be over near the Baptist Church that's over there, and then kind of in the middle, middle of the park, and then over near Tompkins. So, as I said, this is just the beginning. This is just kind of a phase one. There's more to come, so stay tuned and we'll keep you all updated. If there's any questions, we're here to answer them, and thank you for the Parks Committee for a great job and great help.
Danielle, I have a question.
Sure.
The, I noticed to hear on your very first handout, these trees that you proposed to plant along Thirty-Sixth Street, but I didn't hear you say, or maybe I missed it, what about the trees that are already there?
The main ones that are coming out along Thirty-Sixth Street are the Siberian elms that pretty much line Thirty-Sixth Street. Most of the ones that are, that are not interfering with the lines will be staying unless Phil may have an idea of if there's any other dead trees in that area, but I believe it's just the Siberian elms that are along that area.
Yes, along that planting site, A and B, there's, are the Siberian elms, there's like thirty-six of them, I believe. And those have all been approved or recommended for removal by the park, the park board. And so that would be considered part of the project, and we want to remove those trees. And we will be replacing with smaller stature trees and crepe myrtles along that, I guess would be the south side of that sidewalk. So we still want, we still want to hold on to the benefits of what the Siberian elm trees offered, which is, you know, some shade for walkers in the sidewalk. It also provides a buffer, you know, from traffic along Thirty-Sixth there and walkers in the sidewalk. So we want to do away with the liabilities of the trees that are growing into the lines and replacement trees that will still have.
Where I was going with that is, you had a list up there of what Bethany's part in this project is, but I think we missed one item, is the removal of the trees Phil just spoke of is, that's Bethany's responsibility also, isn't it?
That's good.
Right.
My apologies for not including that.
How much would that cost?
The removal of the Siberian elms, it would, I don't have, I don't have that cost right now, but it would be, it would be expensive. We have the capability, well, we have the ability to do it in-house, which would save some money, but the capability, as far as where to get scheduled, we'll have to look at that. We would definitely go through all the proper protocols to secure quotes and stuff like that if we were to do it outside.
I have a comment and a question, please. First, let me say, I've worked with the Oklahoma City Community Foundation. It's a wonderful support organization, very, very worthy support organization. But my question is, making the leap that all approvals are granted, do you know, anticipate when that grant would be awarded? Is it pay, pay you back later? Or is it upfront?
No, it's, it's awarded about the same time in February, whenever we're notified. That award kind of happens within about that same time period. It's not a reimbursement grant.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Do we know if these are three-foot trees, eight-foot trees, ten-foot trees, seedlings?
The ones we're going to be putting along, the new installs, yeah, they have a mature width and spread.
Well, not mature, I mean, what they'll actually be, will they be seedlings or will they be three-footers or five-footers?
Oh, okay. And how they arrive when we put them in the ground? Between inch and three-quarter and two inches caliper. You know, we want some that are going to be substantial, and that, that way they, they get established easier. And lawn mowers and weed eaters tend to stay away from them a bit better when they realize there's substantial trees there. So, yeah, we're, we're shooting for inch and three-quarter, two-inch caliper trees. And those, that would translate into a height of probably eight, eight feet, eight feet tall.
Kind of like a Home Depot size, I'm guessing, or bigger.
Well, I think we'd probably network with the grant people on, you know, where they, where they would get the specimens selected. They probably have the capability to go right to the growers, the wholesale, wholesale end of the industry, and where you, which you can get a higher quality tree than what they sell in those retail outlets like Home Depot and Lowe's.
I would like a question answered in nomenclature. When you say terminal, that means trees to be removed?
Correct. Terminal means a tree that is either dead or dying.
And would that include the majority of the trees that are north of the sidewalk on Elden Lion Park, or south, I'm sorry, south of the sidewalk at, or not Elden Lion, yeah, Elden Lion Park? Those trees that have the, the lines, the electric lines that run through them?
Yes, sir.
Those would be also removed?
Those, those are the primary trees we're talking about. They're Siberian elms that were planted right underneath those overhead lines, and that would be the plan to have those removed.
Phil, you might stand a little closer to Mike.
Would, would, would we rely upon the electric company to remove those because of the liability that may be connected with them? Or would we take that liability?
We would surely reach out to them. I would think that they would want to network and help us out because it is their asset that the trees are growing into. So it would be my recommendation to talk with the city manager and then talk to the electric provider and see if we can do some sort of partnership. Historically, partnerships would entail, they'll come in and they'll drop all the limbs that are going up into the lines and make it safe for, you know, city crews or outsourced crew to drop the rest of the tree.
I see. Would anything be done to the trees in Ripper Park that's on the south side there that have the li, the lines run through them?
Not, not at this time. You know, I looked at those, there are many wonderful, wonderful-sized oak trees that go around the perimeter of that park, but again, those were planted in close proximity to overhead lines, and practically half the trees have been removed over the years, but that's not being addressed at this time to remove those.
I hate to bring this up, but back in my youth, we, we, when I was at Bethany School, we had to learn a poem called Trees. And trees are things of beauty, but when they run through them and they look like wise, standing up, they're not things of beauty.
I agree.
And I would, I would like something, you know, I would like for us to approach it as a beautification project, which I know we have, and there will be a lot of beautification going on in this area. But I would like to see as possibly, if there's any trees that, that are in, in that particular area that do, do present that type of a problem.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got, just a concern, I consider myself a novice, but I think we have an expert sitting right here next to me. And I've, I've paid for trees removed around my office, and anywhere from a thousand to Thirty-six trees, I think you were talking about?
Right.
Which are not small trees. Can be, you know, substantial.
In about 2012, 2013 timeframe, an OG&E subcontractor, I don't remember if it was Asplund or the other one, they came in and offered to remove those Siberian elms in Elden Lion, the ones we're talking about here, completely. That offer was respectfully rejected by this body at that time, but they might be able, as Phil said, they may be receptive to something like that. They were, they were not that long ago, so that might save us some, hopefully.
Mr. Todd, what would you think on something like that, in your experience?
Well, I'd certainly recommend going back to the OG&E, Davey, Asplund, to say, let's think about this. I don't remember coming to the, was I on the board then? Oh, okay. I just don't remember coming forward the body, but if we can keep it in-house, we can live with that. But if we have to farm that out, ooh.
I would, I would like for us to use the art of the deal on this. You know what I'm trying to say? Because this is a very expensive project. I have had to remove trees in the last, since the big last ice storm, and it's not a pleasant situation when you get into your pocketbook. And you generally, you generally are a person that has no negotiating strength whatsoever.
The electric provider should have an interest, interest in.
He has a great liability down there if that ever goes bad, and we're, we're willing to, we're willing to help him, I think.
That's right.
As much as possible to save him a lot of money.
Yes, sir.
I want to commend the Parks Committee, or some of the rest of us turned on, for the work that you have done, because I know you looked at this big project and the thirteen parks, and I really appreciate it. And I appreciate going back to the foundation, the Brian Doherty and the foundation, because I know they did give money for the trees that went down the middle of the boulevard a long time ago, and we didn't maintain them, and that left a bitter pill in their mouths. And so the fact that they're looking at us again and willing to consider us again, and that we're going back to them, I think says a lot. But we also need to keep that responsibility of maintaining what they give us money to Sure. I will make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 1495 as presented.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Item three is a discussion and possible action regarding Southwest Christian University's occupancy permit.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to invite Steve Caton up to visit with you with an update.
Yes, if you'll remember back on August first, you, the council voted to issue a temporary and conditional certificate of occupancy to Southwest Christian University. Basically, the conditions were that they would meet all the requirements of the site plan ordinance by midnight on December 31st of 2017. We're here to give you an update on that. The main things they still needed to do at the time were to install a meter with associated vault on the private fire line associated with the new dormitory, bring, redesign and reconstruct a detention system for their stormwater runoff with erosion control and energy dissipators. And third, install sidewalks along Northwest 39th Expressway and along Wilburn, or Divas, excuse me. My, I wanted to give you an update. As of 2:30 this afternoon, the meter was installed substantially complete. They still need to put some rock in the dry well on the bottom, but other than that, it was in place and ready to go. The detention system has been graded. The energy dissipators look great. The whole area has been sodded, it's no longer weeds taller than me. And unfortunately, the contractor saw fit to redesign the outlet works on the detention pond, so that is not substantially complete. It was substantially modified with no permission from their engineer or the city engineer. That's something that's either going to have to be constructed as the plans that were approved, or their engineer can resubmit drainage calculations to show that it will comply. Sidewalks, there have been no grading forms or anything else that we can see. So as you can see, that's certainly not substantially complete. As I mentioned, their temporary CEO expired on the 31st. They will soon be wanting to move children or students into that facility again for the spring semester. Just to be honest, this body needs to decide what we're going to do about that. Options?
There was something about parking, weren't they, to try to acquire some property?
That was, that was something by June the first, they had to have torn down a building across the street, since it's not tied to this particular site. That was something the P&amp;Z was going to revisit in June. The, that was not a particular condition to this site plan, but it was something that would, would have to be brought up by the fall semester. What we have a problem with tonight is, staff needs some guidance on how we want to proceed with this particular item. Those of you with long memories know that this item goes all the way back over a year and a half, and we're finally close to the end, but still, still have a little problem ahead of us.
Are they giving reasons for the delay, like weather?
Obviously, we would not allow them to pour the sidewalks today, it's too cold, but the design phase took a lot longer than it would normally take. They didn't get their site plan approved until late November, so it was a little bit slow getting that part of it done, to get their approvals and proposals. part of it done, to get their approvals and proposals in, uh, in, in a timely fashion. Uh, no, I have not talked to them and found out why, uh, any of that took longer than it should have, but it, it certainly did.
Is anyone here to represent them? I don't see.
Mr. Shirey, would you, would, for those of, of the, of the council who have not been here, would you give a brief history of the asking for forgiveness instead of permission that we've dealt with this in the past?
Now, is, is my, my, uh, is, is it?
It was.
Okay, it's not working. All right, I'm sorry. It isn't, that one is. This one's not, okay. Um, forgiveness is something that you give one time, and we have forgiven this one time, but I feel, you know, that, that they are, in their feeble way, trying to finish this project. I have, I am like Mrs. Harris there. I'm more concerned with the parking there than I am anything else, and that's six months away. But, that being said, what benefit are we going to derive from this by saying, "You can't, you can't continue operation of your university for lack of a permission from the city of Bethany because you have failed to pour concrete for sidewalks when it's seventeen degrees," although, as you did say, it's been a year and a half since they should have done this to start with. Is that correct? Give me a substantial something or other to go on here.
Yeah, I mean, if you're asking me, that, these things should have been included in the original site plan approval and should have been none, and yes, they did decide to go completely away from the approved site plan, and that's what got us here on the second round of all this. All those things are exactly true, again and again. I agree with you. What purpose would it serve to tell them they can't use their, uh, dorm that they've already been occupying for a year and a half? Uh, I'm not sure, other than somewhere along the line, the rule of law has to come into play here, and, and somebody needs to be aware that we do have rules. If you don't want your rules enforced, you should probably repeal them. Uh, but is the, is the way to do that, throwing a bunch of college students out in the cold? I don't think so, but, uh, on the cer- on the other hand, if, if you give them an extension, let's say, to do another thirty days to finish it up, and now they do have people living in there and they decide not to do it again, are, are you, I mean, literally, are you going to throw their stuff out on the curb and, and not do it, or have Mr. Davis and the judge get together and give them a five-hundred-dollar a day fine when they don't have any money to do anything with anyway? Uh, I'm, I'm not sure. This is precisely why I'm standing here asking for guidance from this body. Uh, I'm not sure what you want us to do. Technically, if they move into that dorm, they will be in violation of chapter one fifty-five of your code of ordinances and subject to a fine of up to five hundred dollars per day, and that would be the only course of action I would have, and of course, that would just be throwing it to the court to decide what to do with it.
But what I remember is, and I, I'm not in favor of just doing that either, but this is about the fifth time we've done this for them, and when somebody, I'll give you an idea. Fon Sanchez, just happen to know that citizen, because I hear from him all the time, they threw, not a great example, but they, if, if anybody else turns in a plan, says this is what we're going to do, and then they say, nah, let's not do it, they just do whatever they want to do. It doesn't fly with anybody else. We make them tear it down, tear it up, do it again.
I, I, I don't think you understand. I think this was the, the way we operated at one time, and this shouldn't have been started to start with, but they were given permission to go ahead, and therefore, they went ahead, assuming that we would, would, would say, "Well, it's okay, you know, you're a, you're a, you're a good si- corporate citizen in the city of Bethany, do it," and, but the time has come that we enforce the regulations of the city of Bethany.
We do it for the citizens, just.
Other than the parking situation, it, my memory is that one of the problems was the encroachment of Bon Eldon Lion Park. Has that been mediated?
They put a natural gas line in, and that has been, uh, removed and relocated onto their property, yes.
Does the city attorney have a recommendation as to another remedy that we can seek in this situation?
I think, uh, you know, the remedies are basically to, um, file an action in municipal court, uh, district court and city injunction to prevent them from putting the students there. Perhaps, uh, filing in court, uh, might bring it to head, uh, in that, you know, the judge would then have some authority to order them to meet a deadline or pay the fines, so, you know, that might be a viable alternative. Uh, my understanding of this is that the original site plan that was submitted was approved, and I don't believe it had all of these requirements that are now incomplete on it.
That is absolutely correct. A year and a half ago, we met with them, said, "We're not quite sure how it got approved in its form, but we are willing to live with it since it was approved. If you will build it the way that approved site plan says, then everything will be fine," and that's what they said they were going to do, and for whatever reason, they didn't do it. They redesigned everything and, and did it again.
Can I say that a little slower, just in case I miss- heard it? We're not quite sure how it got approved, that.
I was blissfully at Public Works at that time.
But I, I believe the city manager just approved it, is what happened at the time.
I have a site plan in my office with an approved stamp on it.
We never got a shot at it to even see it, is what I remember.
Well, uh, if it had, if it was in compliance, you would not need to approve it, so, again, I'm not here to talk about the process it went through. It just did get approved, and had they built it according to that set of plan, they wouldn't, we wouldn't be talking about this tonight, but they chose not to.
To follow that up, when they decided not to build it according to the original site plan, we required them to bring in a new site.
That's correct.
And that's when these new requirements were imposed.
Well, they, they weren't, yeah.
Other than parking, as far as safety hazards, the, the water for fire protection and all that is good, correct?
Well, if, anyone who has been out there since they built it and has seen the mud and silt and everything getting on into it, uh, I, I consider the detention system very much safety-related, but they have addressed the siltation issue at least, but I can't guarantee you the thing's going to function. Uh, fortunately, we're in the dry season right now, so they have a little bit of time to either demonstrate that it is going to function or build it the way the plans show.
But it's fire protection.
Fire protection is there. Again, that was redesigned and the fire chief approved the way it is. Uh, as long as they put a meter in, which they've done, it's a private line that the DEQ won't have any problems with.
I think another point that probably needs to be made, that these incomplete items have little to do with student safety element in the dormitory.
As far as I know, nobody has any problems with the building itself.
Is there a way of, um, giving them their occupancy and putting deadlines on side, on the sidewalks, on the other things, like they have a deadline, I think, on the parking?
That's what you did on Au- August first.
Okay, but obviously, the sidewalks can't be poured down.
You could certainly extend that out again if you wanted to. That, I think that would be something you could do. Ex- or grant an extension to the existing temporary. Is that allowable, David?
I believe this council could do it if they chose to.
Have they come to anyone saying, "We'd like an extension. This is our new timeline"? Have they approached anyone, or are they just thinking, "Well, we made it past December thirty-first"?
I, I have not received any.
You had, you had mentioned they, they don't have, you know, pretty limited resources to do these things. I know they, they have a building on Twenty-third Street, I think. I don't know if they'd be interested in doing some trading or some services, maybe use that building.
If, if I may suggest, uh, would it be feasible if we stayed the fines by allowing an extension and they failed to meet the deadline, they would be responsible for the total amount of fines up to that point?
I think once you, uh, once you direct the filing of the charges, that would all be up to the judge. I don't think you have any control over that.
And in a property damage case, we could get attorney's fees and costs on behalf of the city as the prevailing party, correct?
If we went to district court. Um, I would think so, yeah.
And a filing of a lawsuit for an expense on behalf of the city is what, approximately two, three hundred dollars?
Well, the court cost would be two hundred plus, and the service fees, uh, yeah, you'd have that much out of pocket, plus, you know, somebody's time to do it.
Obviously, they'd have to hire an attorney too, right?
Probably. They may have one on staff, I don't know.
I think it's fair to say it's a delicate situation, but the fact is, they need to do their job and comply.
Well, I agree with Mr. Palmer that it's a very delicate situation, because we don't want to be perceived here on the horseshoe as being anti-business, but yet, we don't want to be run over as well, and so, uh, personally, I'm inclined to say, we'll get a conditional permit, but give them a definite time period. Other than that, we're going to take drastic actions, and I'm not sure what the drastic action would be, but it would need to be defined in this conditional permit that we would suggest to offer.
I'd say that might be, uh, referring it to the court system, might be the drastic action.
My recommendation would be to, and, uh, draft the petition, uh, provide a copy to the university, allow them an extension of time, and, um, if they don't comply, they are fully aware of the, uh, pending lawsuit that would be filed to enforce the ordinance.
Putting students out of dorms during the semester makes lousy headlines, and if we're going to do an extension, I would suggest that it concur with the June extension we've given for the sidewalks or whatever it is, parking. What's the current extension?
I would not recommend that, because the spring rainy season is when we're going to need that detention system to function, and if they haven't completed that by March, you're at risk.
Well, that doesn't affect the dorms, so nothing has.
That's part of the dorm site plan.
Okay.
Do you have any wild hunch, Steve, on how much work, if weather permitting, how much time it would take to complete these items?
No more than two weeks. They've already had to tear the outlet works out once and redo it, and they redid it wrong again, so, uh, it's not a hard thing to do.
So it's presumably the construction person who dug the detention that messed up.
Right.
So they would have to come back and redo it, and that would not be a cost to the university, because that isn't what they told them to do.
I am not familiar with their arrangement. I know there was an interesting arrangement between finance and the construction company. It was a design-build type thing, and I'm not sure what the details of that, that arrangement are, and.
I will, I will remind you that a contractor is subordinate to his person that he's working for, so if he does something wrong, it's also the person that he did it for.
Again, I'm not going to presume to know what their contract says about that relationship.
Uh, I know that nobody took that serious when I said about their building. They do have an asset that is crucial to Twenty-third Street, and it's currently for sale at eleven. And, you know, if, they might be interested in doing something like that if somebody would talk to them about it, if they're having financial straits right now. Uh, it could be its own tip. There's a lot of things.
And if I misspoke about their financial condition, I don't know. It's just in our conversations with them, they have repeatedly, uh, stressed that they don't have a lot of money to do these improvements, so.
Obviously, time and money is, uh, what they're struggling with. We don't want to kick students out on the sidewalk, especially in the cold. They can't pour sidewalks, because it is too cold. They've already got a deadline for the parking lot. Um, the detention pond, obviously, is something that they, they should not be waiting on till warmer weather, I would think, to get it fixed and get it functioning. I think we need to come up with some kind of deadlines on these things. I mean, the detention pond is one thing. That needs to happen now, or give them a very short deadline to get it completed, and then the sidewalks equal with the parking situation, and then, if it doesn't, if they're not attempting to comply, then it goes to whoever it needs to go to legally. I don't know how we get off high center here, is what I'm saying. We need to, we need to do something. I agree with Mr. Todd, that we want to help everybody out we can, but we don't want to be used and abused either.
Mr. Mayor, I have a concern that they've come to the deadline and haven't said a word. You know, that's kind of a, it's kind of a slap in the face.
And I'll publicly, not to interrupt you, um, Councilman McCush, but I'm disappointed. I know that they were at the P&amp;Z meeting that I attended, which was a good representation, so. A feasible solution would be an extension for a period of time related to the retention system, and then extend the sidewalks to comply or coincide with the parking lot extension, if we can agree to that on the horseshoe. Um, ultimately, I think, if we have to take legal action, they need to be aware of that. I think we've done a good job of telling them that tonight, so, um. Forty-five days from.
Forty-five days would be more than enough time to complete the entire project, uh, weather permitting, and I know we've had unusually cold weather, but by the end of the week, it's going to be back in the forties, which is plenty warm to pour concrete. You can certainly do dirt work and forming when it's colder than that, so I, that should be plenty, as long as it doesn't rain, but you might want to give them that much, or sixty days or some, but again, I stress, we, we, we would very much like to have that detention system in place by the time it starts raining in March, uh, so that sixty days would be more than enough time to get that taken care of.
Then, Mr. Mayor, I should like to make a motion that we, uh, do a conditional permit, extending that out for forty-five days. At the end of that forty-five days, if the work's not completed, we'll pursue legal action.
Do I have a second? Second. Please cast your votes. Item four, proposed executive session for purposes of review of performance of city manager JD Cox and discussion of continued employment of city manager as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, sections three oh seven B one of the Oklahoma Open Meetings Act for purposes of discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of any individual salary public official or employee. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Please, please cast your votes. Counsel, and Mr. Davis, would you join me in executive session?
Thank you, everybody, for your patience. No action was taken, but we're in executive session. Item five is a call to the public. If there's any Bethany citizens that wanna address the council, please step to the microphone, state your name and your address. If you don't wanna state your name and address, and would like to sign in with Mr. Harsman, then that would be okay too.
I would rather state my name in, in public. My name's Randy Luntzer. I live at 6,500 Northwest 36th Street. Thank you for the opportunity. Um, I received an email from our city manager a while back, and regarding a meeting we're having tomorrow night, and so I just wanted to come up here and read the invitation to you, and remind you that, uh, some of the good things that are happening in Bethany with some of the, uh, the committees that you guys have formed, or appointed people to, and, uh, there's a meeting tomorrow night. It's gonna be very informative for a lot of us, Curtis, on 23rd Street, and, uh, involving some of the people, like I said, that you guys have appointed, and that serve the citizens of Bethany on a, on a monthly basis. So, uh, I'd like to read this, if I could. You're cordially invited to join to a joint educational workshop that we are planning for city council, the Planning and Zoning, Board of Adjustment, Charter Review Committee, and the Bethany Economic Development Authority, and the Comp and Plan, uh, Comp Plan Steering Committee. And so, I was receiving this email because I am simply one of, a participant in one of the groups. And this is, again, tomorrow, January 3rd, at seven o'clock, uh, here in the council chambers. And, uh, I will probably ask your forgiveness, Mr. Shirey, because I'll be leaving. My middle son's birthday is tomorrow, so I probably won't be staying for the entire meeting. Some of the things we'll be covering will be the, uh, Bethany Economic Development Authority update, the Charter Review Committee update, which includes the density, uh, I don't hate to call it an issue, but it's been a, to use Gilbert's, uh, word, it's been heartburn in our staff's bellies for years. Uh, the ITBS code update review, neighborhood visioning updates, Bethany Neighborhood Association, 23rd Street, and some, several other educational, uh, topics will be discussed in, uh, so if you guys have any questions about any of that, tomorrow night will be the day, uh, that you can come and just simply listen, participate if you choose, and, uh, see what some of the folks have been doing that you have appointed and asked to join these committees. Now, I'll, uh, I've got my report, uh, ready for the Charter Review Committee, and so if I'm not able to talk, then Gilbert Carlson, in one of his other five committees, will give my report for me. Thank you, sir. And that's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Luntzer, was you gonna barbecue hamburgers or hot dogs for that?
Hot dogs.
Okay.
Yeah, Chief Cole said he would provide.
He's an open fireer. Let's put it that way.
Uh, Chief Hunter said no.
Does anyone else would like to address the council? I'm removing items six and seven from the agenda tonight. There'll be no reports. Item eight is a council member's announcements, comments, and proposal. And let's start down at Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm glad that, uh, former council member Randy Luntzer brought that up. I'm excited about that meeting. It's been a long time coming, and I'm ready to, uh, really make some headway and, uh, kick this thing off. Uh, we've got great potential, lots of possibilities, and I wanna compliment Danielle on her hard work to get to that point. Um, it has been, uh, a process. It takes time, but here we are. So, uh, I think we've taken a proactive approach, and, um, that's what I campaigned on, and that's what we're doing right now. So, uh, thank you, and I'm looking forward to the meeting. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I think it's my turn?
Yes, sorry.
Okay. Um, just wanna wish people a Happy New Year, and this is a year that, as I've talked to people and read Facebook messages, and discussed in my Sunday School class, and everywhere else, there is so much disagreement that then becomes hatred, and we have a right to disagree and still have love in our lives. And I just encourage all of us to do that, and that's something I'm really focusing on this year. We can disagree and still love each other.
Amen. Mr. Todd?
I'm clear. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Moore?
I was just gonna thank Mr. Luntzer for reminding us of that meeting. Um, uh, it's, it is very important, and we do have some issues to work out, but I have no doubt that the people there will come up with ideas, especially the density issue, which, uh, does need to be addressed, but I believe it can be addressed the right way. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Herron? Mr. McCutcheon?
I do. Mr. Luntzer, thank you for that. I actually looked on my calendar on my phone, and I have it in my phone, so I will be there. Um, I'd just like to share just a little bit from our last meeting. Um, I've had some folks that were just ecstatic about Mr. Allen coming here and starting the projects and getting it going, and I just, uh, wanted to share that one more time at the next meeting, and just say how excited I am about how our city is moving forward. You were speaking about campaigning on some things, and that's one of the things I was campaigning on, is bringing new businesses to this town, and what do you know, it's in my ward. That's wonderful. So, um, just wanted to share that with you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shirey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm going to have to wish everybody in the city of Bethany a very Happy New Year. I hope we have a very prosperous New Year in the city of Bethany, and it appears that we have started out with that plan right up front. Uh, I, uh, I've been out of town the last couple of weeks, been up in Nebraska, and let me tell you, I have much better about my partner who used to live in Iowa, because New Year's morning, it was twenty-one degrees below zero, and you've gotta be one tough duck to live up there in that kinda weather. And we got back today, and it was nineteen degrees. I mean, it was, you know, bombing. And, and I want, I want to think, the city of Bethany, I think I have asked very few things in my time on this council, but I asked them to turn my water off, so that if my furnace broke down, my house wouldn't freeze up, because I understand that you've had some pretty dim weather here. And I certainly do appreciate the city of Bethany coming out and turning my water off. Thank you very much. And I turned it back on myself today. They didn't take the meter out.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Neff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, really, the only thing, though it's not as cold as up north, it's still cold. So, I just encourage everybody to check on your seniors, your senior citizens, your neighbors, uh, make sure they're okay. Um, when it gets cold, they haven't let a pipe freeze or something like that. Um, and again, I think I said before Christmas, invite them over, have a meal with them. That's all I have.
Thank you. I would like to say that, uh, thanks for reminding me of that, Mr. McCutcheon, of, uh, the, uh, TIF and all of that. I'd like to, uh, tell Barry Yarborough, the new video guy, a good job. He worked on the video that we shot to tell that story and notify the citizens of what's going on, that we had approved the first TIF in his, Bethany history. And last time I checked, we had almost nineteen thousand views on that video, uh, which is pretty impressive when we about have nineteen thousand people that live in Bethany. So, I just thought that was pretty cool. Uh, and a whole lot of comments. And so, I appreciate everybody getting involved there and checking it out. Also, I had mentioned last time that I met with, uh, some people about a hearing loop to help this council chamber to be more ADA compliant, and help people with cochlear implants and hearing aids, to be able to just walk in, step inside the loop, and they can hear much better. And I did get a, uh, proposal back from that company, uh, that would include the loop in here. It would include, include a portable unit, I believe, two portable units, one that could be used in the fishbowl, or anywhere that meetings need to take place, one at the counter out there, and a proposal to actually put some, uh, things in the asphalt out there, so when a car pulls up, they are actually in the loop, uh, which I was told hasn't really happened much anywhere, so it could be like cutting edge, actually, in that, in that sense. Uh, and it seemed very reasonable. I won't, uh, give the price, but I will be bringing that to council, so you guys can look at that and make a decision if you think that's something that, that we should do. I think it'd be a great idea, personally. Um, and that's all I have, uh, as far as my comments. Item nine is new business, and I have a new business I want to propose for a vote. Uh, I want to propose... I want to propose the, uh, suspending with pay our city manager in light of, uh, some things that have recently happened, and that would be suspending with pay until Thursday in our specially called meeting. That will happen at seven thirty Thursday evening.
Under the Open Meetings Act, in order to declare an item as new business, uh, first of all, there has to be a motion to declare that new business with a finding that this was not an item that could have been anticipated at the last time the agenda was, could have been filed, which was last Friday at five o'clock. And, um, the first motion will be to declare it as new business, and including that finding in the motion. And then the second motion would be to actually, if it is declared as new business, then the second motion would be to act upon the suspension issue. Clear?
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we need a vote?
Yes, and that included the findings that I suggested.
Yes.
All right. Would you include that in the minutes?
Please cast your votes. Do I have a motion to suspend with pay the city manager till Thursday's meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Please cast your votes. Item ten is I declare us adjourned till January 16th, 2018. I open up the Bethany Public Works Authority meeting. Item one is the consent docket. Items A and B, do I have a motion or discussion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item two is new business. Do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until January 16th, 2018. I open up the Bethany Hospital Trust. Item one is a consent docket. Items A and B, do I have a motion or discussion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item two is new business. Do I have any new business? No new business. I declare us adjourned until January 16th, 2018. Open up the Bethany Development Authority. Item one is a consent docket, A and B. Do I have a motion or discussion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Please cast your votes. Item two is new business. Do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until January 16th, 2018. Who is it?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, 2018.
That's a special meeting.
That's a special meeting. With that, I declare us adjourned.